Oh, we're live, alright. We're live, it is eight o'clock and we can stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna be here with the memo with the flag day.
Flag day, oh, I did not put the memo up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, any public comment, thing, none, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin, discussion on the agenda or minutes from September ninth. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Discussion decision to review and approve claims and conservation claims, including the drainage claims. Any questions, comments on the claims? Otherwise, we'll take a motion. Motion by Stecker to approve the claims. Second by Haas. Any discussion on the claims? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. And we have the budget status report. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we can let the record reflect, we've acknowledged though, that document. Your status, I mean. Okay, then planning and we'll come back to that.
He's not here.
Uh, discussion decision, approval for sheriff to purchase twenty twenty-five Tahoe for patrol vehicle. Good morning, Roger.
Good morning, over to the day.
Pretty good.
How are you?
As you know, part of our rotation of patrol vehicles, we purchase two vehicles a year. And we currently, I think I sent you the invoice on it, correct? Did you guys get it?
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah.
So that's the current invoice that we have. Uh, this one is actually there, ready for us to pick up. I'm like the Silverado that we're still waiting on, that is coming. We're trading in the current Ram two thousand twenty. And then I think, if I recall my conversation with Tammy or someone, are we looking at keeping one of our extra patrol vehicles for the sanitarium?
That's what we had talked about in the past.
I mean, I'd need to know from you guys if that's the game plan or not, cause then I need to know which vehicles I could trade in or which ones I could.
Well, I know that.
They have now, I mean, I guess we'd have to talk about.
They've got that, that white.
No, they have a white pickup.
That was an old.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's at least a, oh, two thousand fourteen, maybe fifteen?
It's not, it's not.
I didn't think it was that big.
It's not that great.
Well, regardless, um, the current, we have two Dodge Rams, um, two thousand twenties. One of them are trading in on this Tahoe. And then the other one, that we will get our next vehicle, I won't get a trade-in quote if we're gonna need to keep it for the sanitarium. That's up to you guys.
Well, if we kept, if we kept that one, we could get rid of the other one, that they currently be using. So you could trade that one in.
Sure, right, I mean, obviously we won't have it near the valley, but we can sure, sure get rid of it or trade it in that way.
You can get a quote both ways, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, what, basically what it is, it's a wholesaler that bids on them, uh, I send them the photographs and the bid number. They give us a quote for a trade-in price. They've been averaging anywhere between, well, this one's nine thousand. Um, a couple of years ago, we got fifteen thousand trade-in value. Of course, that was during COVID, when used vehicles were bringing a higher price, but all depends on the mileage condition. Um, typically, this one that we're trading in, I think it's got around a hundred and sixty, seventy thousand miles, something like that, but. That's what I just need your approval on, on, uh, purchasing the Tahoe with the trade-in value.
Is, is there a reason on Tahoe versus the truck? I thought we talked about that some last time.
Yeah, the Tahoe's are the same price as a truck, uh, through the government bidding. Um, they're identical, within a few hundred dollars. Um, the benefit is that we can put all of our equipment inside, rather than in the back end of the truck where it gets gravel, dusty, dirty. Um, with about, an uplifting of a vehicle is anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, a lot of electronical devices in there. And with the Tahoe, we can put them in the back end, far back, uh, in a tray system. Where the pickups have to be put under the seat, and then the only storage is in the back end. No matter what type of a covering you put on it, you're gonna get dusted or in the back of pickup, it just never fails, but. Um, that's the biggest advantage of it, is everything's within the interior cabin of the vehicle, instead of the back end.
So, I agree with everything you said about the dusting. So then, but you said you're still waiting for a pickup for a different vehicle.
You guys approved the pickup way back in March or April, I don't remember what it was.
No doubt, that's what you requested, though.
Yep, yep, that's Chevy Silverado pickup.
So why, why a pickup then, not the Tahoe now?
That was what was available at the time, and the difference is, is with the Tahos, um, the, the storage department, and with a pickup, you just have to make sure that you don't put anything in the back end for electronical equipment. So, they both are efficient, they're both the same price. It's what's available, and, uh, I found out when we ordered the Silverado, was told it was there. We're still waiting on it, supposed to be delivered here at the end of this one. Vehicles have been fun for the last five years, that's not just here statewide. Because of the government pricing, we have to wait till they manufacture them and make them, and they tell you a date, and then all of a sudden they get backwards. So, that's what's happened on that one. This one happens to be on the lot and available. And then, of course, we have to uplift them once we give them, so, or set them all up. Any other questions on that, or?
Okay, motion by Garmin to approve the purchase.
I'll second.
Second by Whacker. For further discussion on the patrol vehicle. Okay, if none, all in favor of approving the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. And we have, uh, discussion decision to, or approval for sheriff to hire part-time jailer, jailers.
So, what we're looking at here is, we have twelve full-time jail staff. Uh, we recently, um, we recently are down to eleven, uh, jailers. We have, we try to keep six male and six female jailers. As you know, we have to have females in the building at all times, because we house female inmates. So currently, we're down to eleven full-time, uh, so we have an opening for full-time. But, after discussion with, with Bailey, our jail administrator, we're looking at perhaps the option of putting on a couple of part-time jailers, instead of replacing the full-time. Couple benefits of that is, uh, part-time jailer, the only benefit we're required to take care of is Ipers. Um, we also are trying to put together a short-term plan of what we're going to do with future retirements. We have approximately four to five people that have been there over, I don't wanna miss calls, so let me look here quick. I think we have five people. One, two, three, four, five, six people that are currently over twenty years of experience. And of those six, four of them could be eligible to retire within the one, next one to three years. Um, a couple of them have told us that it could be any day, any month. Others have said, well, maybe one more year. But we've got a kind of plan ahead, because if all of a sudden we have two or three of them going at the same timeframe, uh, we're gonna be struggling to try to replace positions. So one of the things we're looking at is, we do have a couple of people that have expressed interest that they'd be considered, would consider a part-time position. Um, the advantage of that is, we can get somebody in there, get them trained. Um, we're looking at helping to cover shifts for people that take vacation, call in sick, helping with transports. Uh, we have court days, typically it's one day a week, sometimes two days a week, that we have inmates that have to go to court. And, uh, that would be beneficial if we could have a part-time person just help on, on those shifts. So what I've looked at on the numbers, uh, right now, we budget for twelve full-time jailers. It's about sixty-four thousand dollars a year, if you break it down, uh, for the twelve for wages. So, that's a sixty-four thousand dollar cushion that I feel that we can look at if we get a couple of part-time people. Um, even if we put a part-time position, uh, what the math comes out to at thirty-two hours a week that we'd stay under, uh, that comes out to about seven hundred eighty-six dollars a week. Um, if you have someone work the entire thirty-two hours. What we're looking at is if we can get a couple of people, um, for sure, we'd have one shift per week to cover for court days. And then the other person, we could have available for sick or vacation time, or when Bailey needs to call someone in, um, for transports or something that comes up that we're, you know, maybe not aware of. So it's an option that we're looking at. Um, we hopeful that if we get a couple of people interested in a part-time position, then when a full-time one becomes available, maybe they would move into a full-time position. Or we would have to hire a full-time, and we'd have the part-time to help out while we're trying to replace positions. But we're trying to come up with an option, a viable option, um, because we could face a situation where, if three or four of these people decide to go in the same year, um, past experience that since I've been sheriff, we typically don't get a large line at the door for jailer applications. Especially when people find out it's nights and weekends and holidays and twelve-hour shifts and that kind of stuff. So we're just trying to plan ahead. So I guess the reason I wanted to put on agenda, come to you guys, is I'd like to look at the option of getting a couple of part-time people, instead of replacing that full-time position that we now have available.
I'd like to add, I, um, reached out to a bunch of other counties just to see if they do this also. And there were several other counties in the northern, I'm part of the jail administrator northern, um, whatever group. And a lot of them have part-timers already, and they say it's very beneficial, especially because we have, like he's in transports, court committals that we have to sit at the hospital for, um, just like big court days, they use them a lot for those, just like on a as needed basis. Um, so that's something I was really interested in, so, just wanna add that in.
And I do think we have a pool of some people in the county that, um, are already certified, and some that have experience with the Department of Corrections, that have reached out to us that, hey, if you ever have a part-time position, you know, I'd be interested. So I think it's an option that we can look at, instead of replacing that full-time, you maybe get two or three good dependable people that are interested in part-time only. And then eventually knowing it could move into a full-time when, when we have retirements. It's just another option we're looking at to try to maintain our staff at the jail. But we do have the money in the budget, there wouldn't be any increase. Matter of fact, uh, if I did my math correctly quickly while I was sitting behind the chair, we'd be looking at probably about fourteen thousand dollar decrease, because instead of sixty-four thousand, the most we'd pay out is about fifty something, low fifty thousands, um, if we had two or three people doing the part-time requirement. Keeping in mind that even if we have two or three people, we'd make sure none of them go over that thirty-two hour threshold each week.
So are you looking for approval for up to three part-time?
Um, what do you think about it, two for a minimum, correct?
Two for a minimum.
Yeah, two for a minimum. Um, preferably if we can, uh, one female, one male, just to help out, but. Um, and I, I don't mean this in a discriminatory way at all, but female is almost a must, because we have to have a female in the building at all times. So we'd like to have a female part-time position for sure, uh, to help, in case somebody calls in sick or takes vacation, uh, we can fill that in.
I could see an advantage to having even three here, or the ability to hire them because of being able to roll into a full-time position down the road or something. If you did have someone that was retired or only looking for a part-time position, you don't wanna tie that up with someone who could be part-time and moving to full-time.
Correct, correct. And we're seeing it more and more, uh, we have residents of the county that work in other counties, um, vice versa. There's people living in other counties that would maybe be interested in helping out here one day a week, or whenever we need. Um, and that's something that we gotta explore, because it's, we're not always fortunate enough to get people that live right here close by. Um, in the past, we've been very fortunate, but it seems now that we have to expand outward further to find people that are willing for employment. And, uh, starting out at a part-time position might attract them into the full-time down the road. So.
What do you, what, I'm naive, what do you have to do for training and hours?
Sure, it would be just like a full-time position, so we would, uh, put them in-house training, uh, between Bailey and our senior jailer would train them. And then within that first year, we have to send them to the forty-hour school. And Bailey has, uh, information on that, it's either through the academy or through the Sheriff's Association. And Bailey, correct me if I'm wrong, it's offered throughout the state.
Yeah, forty-hour school is, it's through the ILEA, and so it's either in downtown Des Moines, or I think like Dallas County helps it, there's one in Emmitsburg, that's actually where our current newest jailer went to, was Emmitsburg. Um, and we did that, just to cut down on double costs and all that stuff. So, um, yeah, they're offered all around, all around the state, make it convenient for the counties.
A lot of their training would be done in-house, example CPR, first aid training. Um, all of our evacuation plans, in-house training will be done right here. Uh, but they do have to have that forty-hour training within the first year of employment. Like, if we hired them today, we'd have to make sure they're certified by one year from today. And that's what happened recently, we had an employee that we had for two or three months, didn't work out, so we moved on. And now we're trying to fill that position with part-time instead of full-time. Knowing that we're gonna be replacing some full-timers in the next few years with retirements. We've, we've got two jailers that have been here since the building was open. They've been here for, with that much experience, and I know that they've come to Bailey and said, hey, just give me a heads up, but I may retire here within the next year, or. You know, so we've gotta start planning ahead sometime. Do you have a question, Josh?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, uh, that forty hours, when they go, do they have, is that in one go, or are they?
Yeah, it's a whole week.
Okay, and that's not gonna cause an issue with the part-time status or anything like that?
We have to do it as full-time too, so, yeah, you just have to plan for them to be gone.
Yeah, and we'd have to make sure, we, any applicants that would be interested in the part-time position that are not certified, we'd have to make sure they understand that, hey, at some point, you're gonna have to be gone for five days to get certified.
You endure as, as far as like those hours.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would adjust for like, you know, you get paid out for not just one week, you know. I would adjust for that, I wouldn't put them on any more hours, that would be the extent of their pay.
Okay, well, like currently, they work with seven twelves, and then they have seven days off.
Yeah, but a part-timer would not, he's asking for that thirty-two, not going over that thirty-two hours.
Right, thirty-two hours, yeah, right.
I would, I would adjust for that, so that they wouldn't get anything over that one week of. So their paycheck sheet would not show over sixty-four hours, and we're doing a two-week cycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause if I understand correctly, we're going to two-week cycle for jailers as well, so, for a pay period. So, next June, I believe, is what we're looking at, yeah. So it's just a, it's, I, I keep saying this, but we're trying to put together a plan to prepare for, if suddenly we have a couple of full-time, uh, who retire. We have, we have one that has come in and said, on one bad day for retirement, Elmo's gone, and, you know, so, she could go out any day now, but we're hoping not. Uh, but we're just trying to plan ahead and make sure that we've got their, you know, some other viable options.
What's the plan?
What's your expectations slash experience with how much notice you get when somebody does want to quit, retire?
I, well, I've been, so far I'm being given very sufficient notice. I mean, I have one jailer that has told me that they, they're planning, they're in the planning process. And so, they'll give me at least a two-week notice, yeah.
Our most recent retiree, um, Linda gave us about a month, month notice.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, you know, like I said, a couple of them are eligible, they're just checking into, you know, social security, Medicare, all that kind of stuff, before they make the final decision, but. Um, like I said, a couple of them have been there since the building's been open. Twenty-five years ago they opened, I think it was, two thousand, two thousand one, something like that.
Well, I know a scene of jail, it came from the old jail, so.
We need a motion to approve up to?
I'd make a motion to approve up to three part-time jailers.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker to approve up to three part-time jailers, seconded by Whacker. Any further discussion on that?
You'll be able to stay within your budget with that?
Yeah, we'll just make sure that nobody goes over that. We know what we have available, um, so we'll just make sure that we stay within our budget.
And also, the part-time will cut down overtime for other staff, because I'll have somebody else to call in, so that helps there too.
That's, that's sixty-four, if you look at our line item budget, we, we have about, uh, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, for wages for our jail staff, which breaks down about sixty-four thousand per jailer. That includes holiday, overtime, and the wage side of it. It doesn't include benefits, but it includes holiday and overtime. So we know that we have that cushion, so I'll just give Bailey directions and make sure that what we have, we don't go over that sixty-four thousand dollar threshold per year. Because that's what's in the current budget right now.
Yeah, and then I guess, just from a practical standpoint, I would think if you had at least one of those three positions, that was an individual willing to move to full-time eventually, that would help your transition. You could have a couple of people that would only want part-time, and you could have one that would move to full-time eventually.
And that's what's kind of generated this, is we've had people approach and say, hey, I'd be interested in a part-time position. Um, so one is certified, one is not, but has experience. Um, so we sat down and thought about this, you know, maybe this is a plan we can put together, plan ahead for when we start having these retirements happen.
Yep.
So. Okay, I didn't know, did you guys vote?
We have not.
I was taking notes.
Uh, any further discussion then? Hearing none, and all in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wanna call Doug up now?
Good morning.
Oh, Cory, that's right, we skipped Cory. Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, you can.
I don't have a whole lot, just a couple, uh, for zoning. There's a, I have one variance for, is it Justin Coyle? He's looking at building a new house, uh, property that he owns.
We'll be right in about fiveish minutes.
And then, um, where was I at, excuse me, that is?
How do you sit down?
Um, it's fifteen fourteen to ten street, out of McGregor.
What's the variance he needs?
It's a setback for, actually, it's for the garage. It's a hundred-foot setback, and with where he wants to put his garage, you'd need it to be, not reduced on the seventy. But we're gonna ask for sixty, just the way it's not for him.
Cory, he used to sink his cabinet. He bought that from my, well, my dad.
Yeah, he's gonna look at, what's the sanitarium up there?
Yeah.
What's the setback from, from the road or something?
From the rear, from the rear setback. He's got plenty of distance all the way around him, except for the rear, uh, property line.
Okay.
Howie has it, actually have a, have it, you wanna see it? It's a big garden. So be to, this'll be, Howie had the house, this'll be the garage, that's to the south, and there's a field back here behind it, and this is McGregor. So it'll just be that, uh, thirty-foot, that, that variance.
I'm, I'm okay. I spent a lot of time there growing up.
And the other one is, um, Nancy Howell, she's just breaking off two point seven seven acres. Um, from, to make a acreage off of existing farm land where the property is.
So the variance is less than five?
Yeah, yep.
What's our, what's your recommendation or whatever to the, yeah, I think zoning, or you can leave that totally up to them?
That goes up to the order adjustment.
How are things coming with the Southdale? There's anything new there?
Um.
Or not Southdale, but South Oaks, South Oaks, sorry.
Um, when I spoke with Luke the other day, he was assigning, um, property addresses, nine-land addresses out there, so. They should be pretty close to good to go.
Very good.
Are you doing any inspections for septic, or how's all that going?
He did at least one.
There is, uh, actually Friday I had four calls, or for new septic services going in. There's, it's getting to be that time of year where people are gonna be cramming to get them done before winter.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that bought all the properties this year, supposed to be quite a few.
Anything else? Anything else for Cory?
Thank you.
Thanks Cory, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, and we are, waiting on Doug then?
Take a five-minute break or?
Four-minute break. Sure, that's fine. Take a quick break, let Doug get up here. Morning, Roger.
I do have a lot to sign.
I got a lot to sign, oh boy. I always have a lot to sign.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I wonder if that's Roger's phone.
Howard?
More, you mean Cory? No, cause Cory looked at and walked away, so I don't.
Oh. I think that might be. Text you. When I get back to the office.
Your phone's here, but you won't see this message.
Yeah. They're in the basement.
I have two phones, and sometimes it comes in handy, I have, so I both, they locate both of them. So, if I, lead one, I know where, I left it at least.
Yeah, that's what I liked about my, my watch, is it's connected to my phone. And even if my phone's on silent, I can hit the button on my watch, and it makes my phone make a bunch of noise, so I can find it.
Yeah, I need that for the, the, uh, television remote.
I was, I was gonna say, yeah, so we can.
There's some people that put those little Apple tags in them.
Yeah, now the Apple, you do all that stuff.
Yeah.
Crazy. What's the state doing, Howard, I saw you talking about.
Yeah, I talked to them in length, but. Talked out of school, I don't want to, we, uh, he said they're gonna rebuild one sixty-nine from, how north do your county shift to Elm Street?
To Elm?
Elm, and when they did it in ninety-three, or ninety-two, whatever year it was, or ninety, I don't remember. That was eighteen, was it ninety-three? We moved in in eighty-eight, I think it was the year eighty-nine or ninety, you know, they went all, just south of our driveway, where they started with new, new concrete.
They did.
Yeah, and I don't know why, I asked him about that, why was he going to Elm, and that, that'll make things match up, or whatever, I don't, you know, you'd know better than me.
Well, I, I, I remember that project, cause I mean, that was so controversial with all the trees are gonna be taken down and everything. And I thought that it went past your place.
We were.
I didn't look specifically, you can see where it narrowed.
Yeah, it's like a hundred or two hundred feet south of our driveway.
Yeah.
We couldn't get to our driveway at that time, you know, they, the fence, the fence was lower.
Yeah.
He didn't say where, no, he said where the pavement changes.
Yeah.
And it's, I, I was.
Well, they're talking about a roundabout.
Yeah.
At eighteen, one, yeah.
He, he, he said it wasn't talk, he said that's what it was gonna be, don't write that down.
No, I.
I, I've heard, I've heard about that.
He said they're gonna, there's one, they have a sewer, the north Spencer.
Yeah.
Y, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That bypass, out there on the north side.
Sure, eighteen west, seventy-one north.
Right. Well, that means.
They just spent some money there three or four years ago, you know, redoing the left turning lanes.
Avenue of Saints at Floyd. That, you know, that, when that ball got put in, and you think of all the money they, they spent. They finally put in that grade. Of course, I think when they put in the Avenue of Saints, I don't think the ethanol plant was built right there to the west of Floyd, caused so much traffic. Going out, stayed out, blocks of talent.
Back to your original question, the guy said, I'm surveying everything, he said, it's, it's so much overkill, he said, I can't imagine going much out the curve when they do anything, he said, his instructions were to do it now or risk going out there twenty below zero when we, you know, needed to get it.
I wonder if they, they have talked with the railroad.
That must've got put in there with their.
There's limits. With, with Van Haiden.
What's the, I don't expect you to know the answer to this, the railroad bridge there. It's, it's my assumptions are wrong words, but, but that railroad bridge there, when, before the new highway was put in, the old highway went underneath it too, and one goes by.
Well, I think there's one, at one time, I think, one sixty-nine actually went east. And come out there, like on Main Street.
I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember that, I believe.
You know. So, I, I believe that railroad bridge went there. Prior.
That's what he was up to.
Yeah, well, that's why I wondered if they had plans for all that.
Why would they stop at Elm?
Why would they go that far, is the better question.
Yeah, that would be.
That'd be a couple blocks further than what they replaced thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago. I, I don't, yeah, I.
You say you lived, you moved in at eighty-eight?
Yeah.
And it was shortly after that?
Yeah, very shortly.
That, that.
Could've been eighty-nine.
Cold grading job? Because they tore everything out back then.
Yeah. I gotta, I gotta, he was more than willing to tell me. I was there longer than I thought I was going to be. But I wanted, we wanted to supply it as a bed in the lawn for two or three weeks, and long enough we could take them out.
They were just, just trying to figure out what utilities were there.
Yeah, he said he mapped all the utilities, all the manholes, all the sewers, all. Yeah, really.
Well, we're all back, so we'll keep going with construction in the right way.
Uh, we have one request, it's from Interstate Power and Light, they have a large project up by Lakota. The intersection of Highway one sixty-nine and nine. And they, part of that project would be right along County Route one ninety avenue, which is right to the south. They are taking some power going underground instead of over, overhead with it. And then they move a long ways north and the state will. I would recommend that the board approve of this request.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll do that.
All right, motion by Haas. Second by Garmen. Any discussion on the request? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Carter, ever since, right there, please, thank you.
The only one then, for a rate of?
That's the only request we had, yes.
Okay, well, discussion?
All right. The asphalt projects, there's a lot of cleaning up and some things that need to be done. They also are cutting rumble strips right now, so that's getting real close to being completed. Godverson Smith, the bridge north of Sexton, they're stripping everything, they've got all the barrier rail poured. We have a little bit of work to do on that, the road department to create some fill for them to construct guardrails, so. So we'll get that, and then the guardrail will be constructed and everything will be, everything will be completed on that. Up in Western Hills, we're planning to do some resurfacing up in that area. Actually, starting tomorrow, however, with the weather forecast, I don't know how much we'll be able to do. We have notified all the homeowners there to let them know that we're planning to do that work. We do have some centerline and edge line painting. The centerline is everything south of, excuse me, everything south of B nineteen will be center, centerlined and everything. South of Highway eighteen will be edge lined, and in addition, we have the roads that were seal coated and micro-surface, those will get painted as well. DOT construction with Highway eighteen, they're still using our Road McGregor and the P fifty-six. They're using that for detour. Railroad crossing work was supposed to start up again down by West Band today. And they had one intersection on one twenty street to complete, and an intersection on one ten street to complete, and then they'll be out of Cassouth County. We did get an operator hired for the Algonas shop, his name is Bill Tevin. And Bill lives over in Wesley, but he'll be working out of Algonas. And then we started working a little bit on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six resurfacing. In our program, we have four projects planned. One is a federal aid project, Bancroft Force City Road from one sixty-nine over to P sixty-four. We also have R fourteen north of B fourteen running up to Highway nine, using some local funds and some farm-to-market funds. And then that stretch of one mile road on the east line of the county, running from B fourteen north a mile. All, if we're gonna let these roads in March of twenty twenty-six, we need to have all plans to the Department of Transportation November fourth. And we have visited before about the possibility of using some urban renewal funds. And if the board would like to somehow get a loan to do that, to get, try to get caught up on some of our resurfacing projects that we talked about back when we were doing our program and budgeting. Let me know, we can certainly get them included, some of the projects included. But we've got to make sure we have the money for, to do that. So I don't know if you guys are interested in discussing that again or not, but it'd be appropriate time to do that.
Well, we're gonna have to discuss what, what we want to do, if we want to do, as far as TIF goes, by, gotta have that done by December first. Right? If we wanted to certify any new debt.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll need to have that conversation soon.
Well, if you would like to use that money next year for resurfacing, we're gonna need to know.
Right, right.
So we can get those.
And you're gonna need to know by, before November, yeah.
So we can get that included, so.
And what kind of money is, are we kind of talking about? Do you have any kind of a estimate?
Well.
Somewhat.
Eighty-five thousand dollars per inch per mile of asphalt, and usually we do three inches, so we're looking at two hundred fifty thousand a mile. So.
And that'd be in addition to those projects, right?
That would be in addition to, yes.
Right, right.
Or we could, the money that we're spending on these projects locally, or bridges, whatever, how would you want to do it? I mean, if you would want to include the projects that are programmed in the following year. I got twenty-one miles, I just counted twenty-one miles in our fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. So that would be right at that three million. Dollar mark.
And just a reminder that, right now, we still owe one point three million on our internal loans. We're expecting a little over five hundred thousand to come in here shortly, hopefully, but that's still gonna be, you know, just shy of a million dollars we still owe internally, so I just want you to know that, so you're not acquiring too much to.
Those funds for this year would be paid by the end of this month, right? Yeah.
When taxes come in?
Yes.
Do we know if they've been paid yet?
I haven't checked, just.
Might be worth checking.
At a quarter million a mile, it would, it would take five million dollars.
Five?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, I just, just, when you drive, and I have no idea.
I gotta, I gotta look, I'll get a better estimate.
That's what it costs this year.
That would be using this year's price, yes.
I was saying about this, and I have a conversation.
Probably pull up, you said. No, I said probably six million next year.
And then, I don't know what the high deductible health plan. We always kind of start visiting about that in January, and it seems to always fall back or fall ahead, whichever way you want to say, but is, do you want to start visiting about that again?
Yeah, we talk about doing it, you know, this long.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's pretty much. All right.
Nothing else for Doug? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, we've got our first session at nine. Okay.
No, I.
Is he coming?
He's coming.
Oh, he's coming, okay. Okay, we have discussion with the county auditor then first.
Um, so next week at eight oh five, we have a Seneca Finisher Farms, um, public hearing for a construction permit. We have a request for, to talk about property damage at four oh one Graham Street in Lakota. And Sean Monahan from Corbridge would like to review the Retirement Investors Club for their four fifty-seven B plan. Um, that's all I have for next week so far. I do want to remind you, we'll talk about some dates coming up, we've mentioned it quickly last week when we were talking about drainage hearings. But of course, November fourth is Election Day, or I'm sorry, November fourth is Election Day. But November eleventh is Veterans Day, so we're closed that day, which is Tuesday, so we won't be having our meeting on that day. But we need to have our meeting on the twelfth, um, because of the campus of election. So if that is okay, and we can have a majority that day, that would be greatly appreciated. Unless you all want to come in on a holiday, but I don't think any of you probably do, so.
I don't mind either, but yeah.
Yeah, holiday.
Are we meeting on Election Day?
Yes, we are meeting, that is the plan, um, it's a city school, I don't think that there'll be any issues why we can't meet that day, so yes, I am planning, unless you guys see a reason not to.
No, that's, that's fine.
What'd you say was the construction permit on the twenty-third?
Um, hog construction.
That's next week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Construction permit application for Red Owl Farms, Seneca Finisher Farm site in Greenwood Township.
That's a master matrix.
They're modifying it, I don't think it's a new one, I think they're just modifying it, yeah.
Depending on how much goes on the agenda, I do have meeting in the afternoon that day, so just.
I'll write that on here.
Well, I don't, I don't think it, too much, yeah.
No, it doesn't seem like it, but I just kind of want to move that night.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Okay, perfect, and then.
Is he coming?
Yes, but he doesn't want you to reply to whoever until after you talk to him.
Okay. No, you're fine. And then just a reminder. Or a check-in to see how we're doing on DD sixty sub four, have Wrightsels been up there?
Yeah, and I was gonna talk about that during the board discussion, so I can talk about it now, or later, I guess, whatever you'd prefer. So, the cleanup has been done as agreed to by both parties, and there has been a settlement reached between the parties, the San McColl. So it probably won't even come back to the boardroom, so.
Good deal.
Um, will you let us know then, so we can pay the, because we're still waiting to pay that final?
So have Boris Galski's been paid or not?
No, I don't, well, I'll have to double check on that, I know.
Yeah, because there's a couple things I was gonna talk to you about and double check with that, because they said they hadn't gotten the warrant for crop damage yet, which I would've thought they already would have gotten those, so.
We were holding on to the final.
Okay.
Pay up until you guys reached an agreement.
Yep.
I'd say thanks to everybody who was involved and taking care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay. Howard, anything?
Uh, we had a department head meeting on Thursday last week, and they're gonna have another one in two weeks, or a week now, right? The twenty-fifth, twenty-third, or twenty?
Yeah. Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Where they're gonna talk about payroll change and management.
Saying I had the department head meeting, that's a safety meeting, and our safety date's not going to be October thirtieth. Just because of some conflicts, so they're looking at maybe in the spring. Um, I encouraged them to have it in the spring before any election stuff starts going on, early in the spring. And then, you know, that, so she's looking at court to have that October, try to be open. Um, and then I also had early childhood meeting. We just basically, it was kind of a quick meeting, we talked about the annual report for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, just went over everything, and the carryover. And all the carryover works, and I mean, there wasn't a lot of carryover, but still, carryover's good, they can't have more than, I believe, she, I thought she said twenty percent. Um, and I think we had six percent, so they're using their money wisely and everything, so. I also, and this can be, I, because we can't really get into too much details, but I do have kind of a drainage issue that um, I have some land that's at the end of a drainage district, but not in the drainage district. So the drainage district stops kind of at a corner and dumps into this little creek. It's not in the drainage district. Seems like the water flow is impeded. Just wanting to talk further about that at some point as to what my. Just wanting to talk further about that at some point as to what my next steps are, um, to handle that. I've met with Luke, I've met with landowners, um, not landowners of the property that could be impeding, but I wanna get some, you know, advice before doing that.
Do you know if it's a deeper dam or something like that?
No, I think it's kind of a, I think it's a man-made structure, and then, um, because the flow of the water hasn't been able to go through, there's a lot of vegetation that has built up. And, um, it's just really impeding it, so I don't know how to handle it since the ground we're talking about is not in the drainage district, but it's definitely
Affecting the flow.
affecting the flow, so. Anyway, just wanted to at least bring it up right now, we can have further discussions, but just so you can know what's going on.
Sure.
That's it.
Um, while you guys were at the department head, I was out on sixty-sub-four, which I just talked about a little bit. And then we did a, me and Tyler and Tad also did a walkthrough, basically together in the vehicle, or side-by-side on, um, Lot forty, so we hit that on our way back. And I'd say in general, that was in pretty good shape, there's a few small things for cleanup, Tad took notes of those. Like I said, we were all together, so hopefully that should be wrapped up in good shape here, possibly already, but if not, very soon. So, kind of walkthroughs on both of those projects on Thursday. And I think do have, um, meeting for it's a kind of a training on proper social order that I shared with everyone, I think, last night. That's this afternoon. I believe it's similar to another one I had seen, um, actually at one of the NACO conferences I went to, but figured it was good to brush up on stuff again and for the rest of you guys to see that, as well as, I think there's another one I shared. Well, that was, that was sent from Isaac Base Camp, but, um, it's hosted by Control, so.
Does that, you have to watch it live, or is that something that's recorded?
I think they are recorded, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this one, but I think they have both options, but don't bullpuck on that, I guess. I know I've seen other ones recorded previously, but that one, I'll probably try and watch it live this afternoon.
I, I might do that, depending on how some of my drainage.
Just good opportunity for everyone.
It is.
Josh, or Reed, okay?
Yeah, I think so. Didn't really have any meetings, went to the Public Safety Night, I was good at that. Yeah, I didn't have any thoughts.
Okay. Uh, I had a de-cat meeting, first one of my time in office, and I know what de-cat is, and, uh, now, so.
Then you can answer twenty questions about it.
I can answer twenty questions about it now, but, uh, and not only have I had one meeting, we're gonna have two meetings this year, so, and a meeting in December again. All, yesterday was for, was for approving some mini-grants and had, or the, the plan for approving mini-grants and, um, contracts, which will actually be voted upon in the December meeting. Uh, what de-cat is, is it's, it's Health and Human Services Funds, HHS funds, that, for example, when I was on Care Connections, we would get HHS funds, um, from the state, and every year you send so much money back to the state at the end of the year. That money that gets sent back gets decategorized, that's de-cat, and then divvied back out to local boards and organizations, um, which is what the de-cat board is for. And our particular one is, is for child abuse prevention strategies and programs and et cetera. Mostly, this board focuses upon older youth rather than the younger, since early childhood dollars um, cover a lot of the, the younger kids, and not exclusively, but, but they tend to focus more on the older kids, there's not as much funding for that. But that's, that was de-cat, it was a very short meeting. Other than that, I had some drainage things to take care of, and we've got that unique one that'll be coming up at some point, so. But anyway, uh, well, that's, that's about all I had I needed to mention, so. What time is it? Eight fifty-five, we've got Bob at nine, so.
Drainage repair.
Yeah, let's do drainage repair requests real quick.
Yeah, we can do that, maybe we can break.
That'd be fine, we'll do a repair request and then take a quick break.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure. I brushed that off my list.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, so I have number seventy-one, that's in our packet and stuff, Drainage District number twenty on Main number two. This is in Ramsey's Section sixteen, um, tub plugged and there's a mat attached, and then, says Wrightsels fixed it before, so. That's out in the Union Slough's ground, south side.
Okay. Need a motion for supervisor to handle the request? Motion by Wacter.
Second, second.
Second by Haas. Discussion on the request. If not, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. We will come back to drainage later and take a quick break.
Um, I think it's no different still.
Yeah, I'll text you, or I'll come get you when it's time to come in.
All right, I'm just telling you this here, then.
Okay.
This will be.
That's okay, it's all right.
But it didn't seem like it was, so I don't know if it's the same thing.
No, that's, that would be, so. I, it's always easy.
Cause when he wouldn't tell you.
I, I can tell you, you're just like.
Cause he said German thirty-one has ponds.
Right, so this is sixteen, this is where, that's how that comes over to this. Middle to north of that, he would be down.
Maybe they're more worried about the paperwork.
These people are very difficult to deal with.
Probably over here.
Okay.
True.
Cause he drove it, and he told me to.
Yeah, so that's the road that it would come, but then I think it, and what he reported toward in here.
That interaction, no.
Uh, he, he had me.
Yeah, it would've been in German, thirty or thirty-one, the water was standing.
You have to, you, it says in the law, we have.
I was, I went north of Harlem Arms, where the outlet was.
Yes.
There's not any water in that outlet anymore. It did appear to be.
So that'd be right here, the beginning of the.
So there really wasn't, not much, I got a big river, um.
So, the man is sectionalized.
Well, there's a little bit, this is kinda zooming on into it, from from the road, from the road to there, there wasn't any, well, that you could see.
It keeps it high, but high the slope climbed up in there.
And then we just kinda went, went on the bridge down there, and this, and this side, this way, it's just very, I mean, nothing, no movement. Exactly, so I just didn't know for sure what to do.
That ditch may be something, but, um, if it's, if it's that water. Thanks for getting that, take care.
And then DPS for the NCIC. It's stable as the HS board, right?
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know how many jobs to run it, but I know it's stable, it's got, yeah, that's what I do. Report's supposed to be high. Example of good, good things that have been done.
Because.
Which, anybody's. It was fantastic, right? It always, it's all.
You have.
No, but in talking with the drainage engineer, he said that you have the right to tell them the can't be.
Yes, you have a lot of labels.
Well, it's more than that, I mean, it's the entire creek is, it's all right there, the water can't get through, so it's affecting DD forty-five, that outlet's into that creek.
But in the end, last time, we decided it was a civil suit.
Okay, that, where's the, do you have any, that, cause there's nothing in the file.
Doug, Doug, you might've looked at it. Doug, you know, right yet?
No, I talked to Doug about it, he didn't.
But it's.
Turned that up.
We'll have to ask him.
Ask who? Oh, yeah, well, not today, that's not why he's here today, so.
But you'll have to, but we decided last time it was a civil suit. And I don't know if anybody did it, but that job's not in my memory, I'm doing it on a job today. Does that make sense to you?
Um.
Because they're doing monitor damage to the harness and the other people.
Yeah, I don't know, there's other areas where they, they're hoping they had to pick it out. Um, and I don't, not even investigative, but they're, they're actually in the drainage district, so. The ones, one actually is not that far from there, and it would be in March if they had to pick it out. So, I don't know.
We'll find out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna just assume it's, I can't do anything, and it's court, I mean, you know.
Yeah, but I think it is a civil suit, because it's not the drainage district for the spot you were talking about that's held that in.
Yeah, yeah. I talked to Tyler quite a bit about it, too. Yeah. So it's, um, yeah, let me get my, I have Doug.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Come to that, so.
Which would be good.
Cause I have one interest.
You know, I think it's gonna be one of the years that we used to ask that they're all ready the same day.
Three tents.
It might produce, or might do something strange.
And I, I've, I've got a couple meetings next week, the twenty-third, the twenty-fifth.
And it's right?
I'm sure.
I got.
Oh, I know the development in the afternoon, and, but, I said it either, but, I don't think it'll come that fast, but they've got a couple of small pieces that'll come pretty quick. I always say the twenty-fifth September, and then, if somebody asks him, that'll do, and maybe they'll look at mine.
Yep.
So how do I know?
Oh, Roger.
Good, three weeks after each, I go.
I know, but that's what it is, it's a good rule.
Your head?
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm, I'm having cyber.
Ah, I don't know, I don't think so, it's on the top of my head, it's usually my way.
None of caffeine?
I think I'm just nervous about this.
We got three ready.
Oh.
Reveal just to come.
Nope, you don't have to use all three.
Well, we gotta load it down, down here, so you know, you gotta have backup, because it's.
That's gonna be recorded, you know.
You guys all ready, or? Okay. No response from them.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'd say I'm ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, sounds good.
Please show me something on that.
That's all right, yep. Well, it is after nine o'clock, so we have a we have a discussion decision, proposed session per Iowa code twenty-one-five-one C, per Attorney Bob Goodwin case, yeah, regarding pending litigation, so if we could have a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Wacter, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes. Okay, we are now in closed session, and we'll give Tammy a minute to.